Let me call the meeting to order. This is the public hearing for the, with the budget. Attendants tonight, as I just announced, was Ms. Massey will not be here and we will check on this purpose. Everyone else, attendants either virtually or here. Mr. Mann is here and he's off screen a little bit. With that, could you please rise if you're able to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, this is our public hearing for our budget. One of the things we need to do, we will cover the information regarding the public hearing in Mr. Silas' presentation. So in our agenda, we have the call of the meeting, which is a notice of public hearing, and we do cover that, like I said. So we'll need a motion to waive the reading. So we have a resolution on the table to waive that. So I need a motion to waive the reading. I see Michelle and I need one more. Mark Mann, all those in favor? All right, we'll waive the reading. Thank you very much. And we will go into the presentation of the budget by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. Can everyone hear me? You give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Very good. Thank you. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed budget for next school year. The board adopted the proposed budget at its last meeting on May 20th. Included for the public and the board are documents that are available on Board Docs this evening. And as we move through the presentation, we will let the public know where you can obtain a printed copy of these documents should you want to review the proposed budget. The public hearing notice has been waived through an approved resolution of the board. And at this point, we will review the requirements of the public hearing notice, which include notifying our voters of the location and the times of the public hearing. We will also discuss the availability of budget documents where voters can obtain budget documents to review. The voting date, as well as the propositions, which will provide an opportunity for the public to vote on three propositions. We will describe the process of the election of board members, as well as identifying voting districts. This year, there is a change due to the COVID-19. We will only have one methodology to cast a vote, and that will be through absentee paper ballots. So the polling sites in the voting districts are applicable in some sense because our vote will be recorded by voting districts. And that recording will take place when the votes are counted, and that will be on June 9th. Additionally, there is still an opportunity for anyone who is not registered to vote to register. There will also be an opportunity when the vote is closed, the voting registry is closed and available for public inspection. Talk about the qualifications to vote on a school board and budget election, as well as the entire absentee ballot process. The notice of public hearing is published as required by state education department regulations, which have been modified this year. They require two publications within 28 days preceding a June 9th vote day. Typically, the school budget is voted on in the third week of May, Tuesday. That timeline has passed, and due to the changes in state regulations, our vote date will be June 9th. I would also emphasize that this time, we don't have a second vote date, which is typically provided to school districts in the event that a school budget is not approved by the community. All the information regarding our public notices that have been sent are available for the community's review on our website at www.egcst.org. The availability of budget packets online tonight on Board Docs, there's a budget packet one, budget packet two. There are different sections of the budget related to the function and object codes that are funded within the budget. They are available upon request at Central Office and at all of our buildings. The East Green Bush, North Green Bush, Sand Lake, and Nassau libraries, which are currently closed, however you can obtain that information through the district clerk's office. We are still obligated to send the documents to those locations. Additionally, all of the documents that we publicize related to the budget are available on the website, and we are providing a review of those documents here at our virtual public hearing for the board and the community to review. The first packet, we'll call it packet number one, provides a revenue summary. Main sources of our revenue include local property tax levy, as well as our state aid, along with pilot agreements, which are payment of the taxes agreements, as well as other miscellaneous revenues. In addition, in packet number one, there is an expenditure summary, which lists by function and object code, all of the district's expenses in various categories. The current staffing levels are reflected in our budget packets, and those staffing levels are also available online. Mr. Edson's office, in coordination with Ms. Cannon's office, does an excellent job of making sure that that document is updated so the community and the board can see how many positions we have in various job categories. Enrollment history, the district does a very good job of studying enrollment through a contract with the capital region planning commission, and that enrollment study is chaired with the board's budget review and advisory committee on an annual basis. Property tax report card. Presentation is not showing?
Yeah.
My understanding is that the presentation is not showing right now. Mr. Goodwin is going to try to enable that. There is a PDF available on Board Docs. If there are any members of the public that want to go on Board Doc, which is on our board portion of our website, you should be able to see the PDF, which is the same presentation that we're trying to upload at this time. Okay. Can someone give me a thumbs up if you can see the slideshow? Or a thumbs down if you cannot? Okay, very good. So we were talking about the availability of documents, including the budget packets. We discussed what was available in packet number one, and we were at the point where we were talking about the property tax report card, which is a required notice that we have to not only make available to the public, but also file with the state education department. We're also obligated to provide a breakdown of our budget in three portions. We call it the three-part budget. It is the administrative budget, the program budget, and the capital portions of the budget. Largest part of the budget is the program, which covers all of our educational and extracurricular programs. There is also a requirement for administrative salary disclosures. Mr. Edson, can you give me the threshold of money, of income that we're required to report?
It's anyone who has a title of superintendent, title, and anyone earning over $141,000 per year. And that information is available for public review. School tax exemptions, we have to publicize the exemptions that are available for various members of the community. Those exemptions require an application for the exemption through the town. We have also a fiscal accountability supplement, which is a required report, as well as a disclosure of our students with disabilities and the ballot propositions themselves. Budget packet number one, we have the enrollment data. We have our grade three through eight assessment data. Our district performs far above the state average on our grade three through eight English Language Arts and Math assessments. Additionally, the school report card is comprehensive and provides not only academic data regarding our test performance, our graduation rate, it also provides demographic information regarding our student population, as well as financial information regarding the financial status of our district. The student educator report is an additional requirement to give you a little bit more information about the district's profile. Voting has changed this year. The voting day will be June 9th. Again, as we indicated earlier, through absentee ballot only. I'm happy to report that that process has gone smoothly and to not steal Mr. Edson and his staff's thunder, I'm going to ask Mr. Edson to talk about an important event that happened today. The important event that happened today was that all 22,228 ballots, return envelopes, and outer envelopes went to the post office. And so it was a major accomplishment, and I thank all of the central office staff for putting it together yesterday and today, stuffing the envelopes, sealing them, making sure they were posted. And so people should have them within a few days. And when they receive them, they should read the instructions for the ballot, mark it accordingly, and return it in the return envelope. Look on the back of the envelope because there is a certification, and the certification needs to be signed by the voter. Only one ballot shall be replaced in a return envelope. Don't do it by family. Each family member who's registered will receive their own envelope, one ballot to a return envelope. And thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Edson. For the process, but it was challenging. The room that you're looking at right now is filled with boxes, envelopes, and paper as of this afternoon, and they ended up very nicely. You did a great job. I want to talk a little bit about the counting process. While there has been a lot of discussion about this issue across the state, based on the advice of council, the ballots cannot begin to be counted until 5:00 PM on June 9th. Is that correct, Mr. Edson? Yeah. And the process does allow districts to continue the counting process until it is completed into another day. We will see how we do. And we may be able to complete it that evening, we may not. Accuracy is the key, not speed, and we are going to also offer the public an opportunity to observe that process through live stream. Typically, we're required to have the election result counting process open to the public. It will be open to the public through live stream. Based on the social distancing requirements and the volume of work that our staff is going to need to do, we honestly would prefer that members of the public, as well as the board, view the process of counting through live stream so that the room is not overly occupied, and so we can go through that as an efficient process. So even myself will probably be watching it through live stream in my office, just to avoid confusion and make sure that the process goes smoothly. But it is open to the public to review, and those results, as I indicated earlier, are tabbed by, and tabulated by, the voting district. Voting districts are Donald P. Southern Elementary School, which is voting district number one. Again, DPS will not be open for voting, however, we will be tabulating the vote, that's our votes that are received through district one. Voting district number two is the Green Meadow Zone, which is for residents of the town of Skodak, which also included Nassau mailing address. And Belltop Elementary School is the voting district number three for residents of the town of North Green Bush. Residents of the town of East Green Bush, district number four, typically voted Howard Algoth Middle School. Again, all of the votes will come to Central Office via the mail, and will be counted by voting district. If you have not registered or voted in a county or school district election in the past four years, there is still an opportunity for residents to register in order to vote. In-person registration, which typically occurs, will, is suspended by the governor's executive order. However, anyone who has not voted in a county and/or school district election in the past four years can still go online to the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles website and register to vote in the school budget and board election. And the last day to register for that is, bear with me because I can't see it on the screen, I'll look on my screen, is Tuesday, June 2nd, because the rolls need to be secured for public review beginning on June 3rd through June 8th. Anyone who would like to inspect the vote registry can do so between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 here at the administrative center of the district, the office of the district clerk, which is in the business office. In order to vote on the school budget and board election, you need to be a citizen of the United States, 18 years of age, resident of the district for 30 days preceding the date of the vote, and, as we indicated, you need to be registered to vote. Absentee ballots have been mailed, as Mr. Edson has indicated. They have been issued to all registered voters, and 22,000-plus ballots have been sent out. We meet, we met our own expectations in advance by two days. We beat our own deadline. It went out today, May 27th. As Mr. Edson indicated, critically important to follow the instructions to ensure that your vote is counted. Mark your ballots with an X or a checkmark. No straight marks on the ballot. Importantly, when you put the ballot in the envelope, turn the envelope over, and there is an affidavit on the back of the envelope for all voters to sign. Envelopes that are received with ballots, ballots that are received with an envelope that are not signed cannot be counted. And if you have any questions, once you receive your ballot or require clarification, contact the district clerk. Additionally, we'll be putting out some public information to assist our voters at casting their ballots, including a video demonstration, which we are working on through Mr. Adams' office and a family of residents of the East Green Bush who have agreed to do that for us. The return ballots include postage paid by the district as required by the executive order. The, there are ballot boxes available only at, you changed that, right, Mr. Edson?
We're evaluating that.
Okay. All right. There may, we may only be able to drop off your ballot here at the district office. We waived that option, but we were concerned about security of the boxes. Check with the attorney on that one. And the deadline, again, is 5:00, June 9th, to the district clerk. And that deadline is ballots received by the district clerk at 5:00, not put in the mailbox. We will not be able to count any ballots that arrive after June 9th. Here is a picture, grid image of the envelope itself. You can see at the bottom of the envelope, there's a statement of absentee voter that is required to be signed, and this one is, in particular, is signed by a John Q. voter. In addition to the board, excuse me, the budget vote, we have opportunity for the voters to cast votes for three candidates for the Board of Education. Each of those three candidates are running for three open seats. Michael Buno, who is our Board of Education president, Kathleen Curtin, who was a longtime member of our board, and our board vice president, Mark Mann, three incumbents running for three seats on the board. We have no other candidates running for election this year. We thank our three candidates for agreeing to continue to serve on our board. Proposition one, you'll see on the ballot, is a proposed budget for the 2020-2021 school year of $99.8 million. The second proposition is for the purchase of eight school buses through a reserve. This year, we are not proposing any borrowing, the purchase buses. Any member of the public can look at our replacement plan and our fleet schedule on our website, which is very detailed. It also indicates the ages of the buses, as well as the plan to trade in those buses and replace them with more modern, safe, and better mileage, brand-new buses, to keep our bus fleet safe. And then we also have the proposition for the election of the three board members. The proposed budget includes a one and a half percent increase to the tax levy, which represents more than $800,000, almost $900,000 of needed revenue for the district to be able to maintain programs and services. That one and a half percent increase is the lowest proposed tax levy associated with the district budget in five years. I want to thank the board for supporting the budget. We also want to let our public know, as we roll out the budget presentations tomorrow evening and to other community groups, that we are not recommending any reductions in positions at this time. However, we are holding out on filling available vacant positions until we see what may happen with the projected reductions in state aid. The governor has indicated that he may cut school aid if we don't receive federal assistance by as much as 20%. 20% of our foundation aid is $3.4 million, and in the event that that does occur, if federal monies aren't provided, we will have to look at potentially reducing positions either now in September or during the school year, depending on how that evolves. Additionally, we are utilizing reserves and fund balance to offset any further tax increases above the 1.5 and to offset, where we can, potential program reductions and staff reductions. However, we don't know how the one and a half percent tax levy will impact tax rates. Tax rates are impacted by town assessments. They're also impacted by differences in the residential rates versus the commercial rates in East Green Bush. State establishes equalization rates that tries to level off value of or property assessments to its market value, as well as changes in New York State tax computations. This year, due to the executive order, we are only really going to get one bite at the apple, so to speak. We believe that the state will not authorize districts to go out to the public for a second vote. Typically, we would be able to do that. We believe there will be one vote on July 9th. In the event that we have to go to a contingency budget because the budget does not pass, we are not able to yield the one and a half percent increase in the tax levy, and we will have to reduce the expenditure side of the budget by $863,479, which also represents the revenue we would yield with the tax increase, and we would have to look at non-mandated programs. And as we look at this list, we see such things as social workers, security supervisors, SROs, honors courses, AP courses. People might scratch their heads and say, well, why aren't those required? Those are critically important to our students, and those are programs and services that meet our community's expectations for a school district. We agree with that. However, we cannot reduce non-mandated programs, excuse me, mandated programs. So these are the things that we would have to look at in the event of a contingency budget. We don't want to go there. We prefer to pass our budget, move on and start planning for next year. The buses include eight total buses at a total cost of $736,000. We reviewed these bus purchases to make sure that we felt confident that they needed to be replaced this year. One of the factors that is entering into school district planning right now is how many buses are we going to need in the event that we have to change or reduce the number of kids on a bus next year? So we do have about 102 or 103 in the fleet. We'll be replacing these, but we're going to need buses, particularly if we are required to reduce ridership. We look at the mileage of our buses, as well as considerations regarding student and staff safety. We look at how much we are putting into those buses to maintain them, our mechanics, our maintenance costs, efficiency. For every dollar that we spend out of our transportation reserve to purchase a bus, the state will replenish that reserve 65 cents on the dollar. 65% of the money that we spend on the buses comes back right to the district's reserve, and we use that to continue to sustain our bus replacement plan. So it's a good deal for the district. The important dates to remember, we are here on May 27th at a public hearing on the proposed budget, and June 9th is a critical date. If you receive your ballot tomorrow or the next day, we encourage you to fill it out, sign it, and return it so that it will arrive in plenty of time for June 9th. And at this point, we'll take any comments, questions, or concerns, either from the board or the public regarding the proposed budget.
Comments? Any? So at this point, we're just checking to see if there's any comments from the public via the email. Mr. Simon, sign on to the computer and just fill it out. But while we wait, are there any comments from the board members as we get back to the presentation and I can see you? So. No public comments? Okay. Board members, any comments? I'll just kind of go around. Mr. Mann, anything? John Dunn? Good. Michelle? Karen? Joanne? And Deanna? And Kathleen is out of town. I just, so. You got everybody?
And I just want to thank the superintendent and the district team for the budget. This year, the presentation, we did the town board meeting yesterday. It was very, the town was very supportive of the budget. Just want to thank the district for the transparency, the information that is shared with the community so they can make an informed decision about voting. And again, these call the instructions that are out there. It's those different processes, and we hope that we can get that. Any questions, please refer to the website and a little video that we present, hoping that will be a fun way to kind of show people how to complete that process.
Based on no other comments, I need a motion to close the public hearing. If you want to make a motion, just unmute. Can you unmute for me?
Raising hands.
Raising hands? Okay. I see John Dunn and I see Karen. All those in favor? Close the hearing? Approve. Thank you very much. Let's go to, moving from the public hearing to the regular board meeting. I will call the meeting to order at 7:31, Mr. Edson. Attendants, as I mentioned, Ms. Massey and Ms. Curtin are not available. We did the pledge already earlier in the public hearing. And let's move to the student council. Is Katie or Lily out there?
Uh, Mike?
Yes?
Megan Austin-Bauer just texted me that they lost their signal connection, so she's going to email you guys her minutes.
Sounds good. Yeah, we can't see who's on because I, we only see, we only see like four or five of you on the screen right now, so. you on the screen right now, so. Yeah, I don't see anyone. Well, in the interest of time, what I'll do is I'll move to the public forum, read that, and then we can come back to Katie or Lily if they are able to sign back on. So again, reminder for the public forum that we will take emails to the board email address. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not direct a response to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliates from the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be open forum. The board president will conduct the forum to the orderly and efficient operation of board business. Any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be cleared out of board. So this is an opportunity now to email any comments. Give you a few seconds to do that, and we'll just keep checking. No comments yet. And again, there'll be, there'll be a second opportunity after later in the meeting to do that as well. See, no public comments. Is there any other board comments? In general? This is challenging, I don't see anybody. I see a list of names out there, so if again, if you do have something to say, just unmute, and you're going to have to shout it out and identify yourself. Are you okay? All right, well, any reports, Mr. Simons, for this part?
I don't at this time.
Okay. Again, if Katie or Lily come on, they have some comments to make about what's going on with the students, we'd love to hear from you if you're able to sign on.
Should I do?
Okay.
Last night, Mr. Leonard started a process, which I did approve, to recognize our senior athletes. Typically, during the sports season, we have a senior night, and Mr. Leonard worked diligently with athletic trainer and his coaches to create a process that complied with all of the requirements, including 10 or fewer people in a gathering, social distancing, cones, procedures to invite student athletes from the various spring teams who did not have a chance to compete, to come with their families, parents, and take a photo in their uniforms and to be recognized, which was a really nice initiative on Mr. Leonard's part. There were a couple of teams last night. There were some additional teams tonight, and he's going to be running that over the next few days. I will say at the town board meeting, some of the town board members who were parents are very appreciative of Mr. Leonard's and the athletic department's efforts. Like, everybody feels badly that the kids didn't get a chance to compete this year, particularly in their senior year. So this was a nice recognition and acknowledgement of students and their families' senior year. And I want to thank Mr. Leonard and the entire athletic department for joining us.
Yeah, it was great job. I think I was able to see a lot of it on social media, Twitter reposting by the athletics and the parents. And the athletes together, you know, we didn't get to have much of a sports season, but you know, it's good to see that they're able to do that.
We'll also be doing a program for those students that are going to college to play sports, signing ceremony that we said that we do.
Okay, now we have moved to our discussion items. First item for discussion is summer school planning. I know Molly McGrath is out there. Molly, are you out there?
Yes, I am, Jeff.
Okay, very good. So last Friday, the governor, through an announcement, indicated that schools would only be permitted to provide summer school through online virtual learning. Molly McGrath has been working with special education staff in the Department of Human Resources, Marissa Cannon, to develop a program for online summer school for our students who are required to receive summer school through their individual education plans. And I'm going to turn it over to Molly to talk about the planning of that virtual summer school.
Thanks, Jeff. So we understand that the online format of distance learning and teletherapy can be very challenging for our students with disabilities who have been working very hard for 10 weeks to continue learning in this structure. So in order to run an efficient and cost-effective summer school, we decided that it was important to contact every individual family that has a student who's eligible and check in with them to see if they would like to continue to participate in our regular six-week summer program for three hours a day, or if they would like to decline and take the summer off, because many families are feeling distant learning fatigue, if you will. So right now, our special education teachers are highly responsive, and they've already touched base with almost 87 students and families. They're still working through the list through the end of this week, and we've had about 25% of families say no. So once we have accurate enrollment numbers, we will be building class lists and staffing accordingly.
Molly, one of the things you talked about the other day is we still have a fairly high percentage of staff interested in doing it, even though it's so remote. Is that right?
Yes.
It's going to canvass the staff, and there's still a high interest in providing the program.
Correct.
At what point, at what point will you determine that the enrollment is set and kind of the cutoff date?
We're hoping by early to mid next week, we'll have more accurate enrollment numbers, and we'll be able to build accurate class lists in order to hire the correct number of staff to run the program effectively.
Thank you.
And when's the first day of summer school, Molly?
July 6th through August 14th. It's a six-week program, 30 school days, three hours a day from 8 to 11, which will obviously be distant learning and teletherapy this summer.
We are going to recommend, we are recommending this evening the appointment of Tom Brunel to be the summer school principal. Mr. Brunel did a really good job last year in that role, and there will still be a lot of coordination and oversight required to oversee the program.
Any questions from Molly, board members? Hearing nothing? Thank you, Molly. I appreciate the information on summer school and keep us posted.
Absolutely, thank you.
The next discussion item, probably something that everyone's been hearing about, reopening and the task force that the district will put together to facilitate that process. You know, the guidance has been fairly minimal. There's a lot of questions, there are a lot of answers, and being proactive, many districts, including East Greenbush and others, are looking at putting together internal teams to see what a potential reopening might look like and consider all the factors. And maybe Mr. Simons can share a little bit about that.
We sent out an email last week to the board, administrative team, as well as our respective union leaders. In the email, we identified various roles. We're looking for representation on the reopening committee. As Mr. Buno said, while we don't have any guidance yet from the state education department or any information from the state task force, we do need to begin the plan for multiple scenarios. Everything from reopening of our schools where there's physical attendance in the school, but we need to follow different procedures, group size considerations, such as in the cafeteria, in the gym, limiting contact, wearing of masks, appropriate sanitation. Procedures will have to change for students coming off the bus, entering the building. A whole number of decisions that would need to be made regarding how we group classes, avoid grouping classes into large groups, impact on assemblies, impact on field trips. A review of how we will operate if the kids are actually, if the staff are actually reporting to school. The second scenario would be if we are continuing to operate online for a period of time and what we've learned from this experience and how we might be able to evaluate what we're doing and perhaps do even better than we are, as well as a potential hybrid model, in which kids are coming to school for part of the day and engaged in remote learning for the remainder of the day. Again, we don't have any guidance other than documents that have been provided through various BOCs that have been developed regionally, with a number of different decisions that we have to look at. We're going to start looking at those documents, making some decisions regarding what if this occurs, what if that occurs. Last week, the governor had a press conference, and he announced that schools would have to provide their plans for reopening by July 1st. However, we have not received anything from the governor's office in regard to that announcement, nor SED, and we don't really know what that means, but we can't wait to find out. We have to have it due by July 1st. I've had an enormous response from the staff interested in doing this. Everybody wants to pitch in and help. I started working with Stephanie, my secretary, today to compile the list. The list is fairly long of the people that want to do it, and we may have to make some determinations about breaking the group into smaller groups. We're going to have an initial meeting on the 8th of June through Zoom and kind of talk about how we organize and what our goals would be. And Mr. Mann will represent the board. He was nominated by his peers and looking forward to working with Mr. Mann and all the staff. Overwhelmingly, teaching assistants, teachers, administrators, nurses, driver, bus drivers, people that are monitors, security supervisors, everybody wants to be involved. And at Molly's suggestion, which I thought was a good one, Dr. Albert has agreed as well, so we decided to choose him to be very, very...
Parents, or...
And parents, yes. We have one parent nominated by the high school. I'll be looking for at least one, if not a couple of parents at every level. Student would be a good idea, too. Probably a middle school and a high school. I had, we had that in mind. They tend to be a little easier. Yeah, it's going to be a large group, break into small groups, and we're going to try to organize the work based on various scopes of responsibility. And we're looking forward to the first meeting.
Any questions for Jeff regarding the reopening task force and committee memberships? I'm not hearing anyone, so I'll just try and be quick, and then thanks for tackling this. I know it's going to be a big undertaking. One of the things that we continue to strive for is community input, staff input, parental input on how our schools are functioning during this time and how their reopening, then the guidelines that are prescribed once they come out. But we need to consider, you know, this is our community, these are our students, they're your kids, and we want to do what's best for them as well, and our staff, within whatever guidelines that the state provides us. Your ideas and input are critical. So thank you for that. We'll be next on the agenda, committee reports. Marissa, anything?
There is an agreement on the consent agenda. It's item K. It's an agreement between the district and CSCI, and I just want to touch upon that for a moment. This bargaining unit is comprised of our food service department, maintenance, and transportation. The agreement is regarding the time worked between March 17th and April 20th of 2020. Those members that were called in and were required to report during that timeframe, they will receive a pay adjustment, and that pay adjustment will be equivalent of straight time for all hours worked. Between the period of April 20th, I'm sorry, April 21st and June 30th, all CSCI will be paid for their regular scheduled hours at their regular rate of pay. I did calculate the financial impact, and it equates to about $62,577 for that March 17th to April 20th time period with that special pay adjustment.
There was, this is a similar agreement that we reached with SRP. When we initially had the close of March 17th, we implemented the essential people that needed to report, the snow date provision. We provided a cost analysis to the board, I think around April 30th, and that cost analysis was based on what we knew to that date. We entered into discussions with the unions about not being able to continue this because it was unaffordable, and both the SRP and CSCI came to a resolution to pay them through the 20th. Yes, and they're paying paid after, after this date of April 20th, they're being paid their regular pay, not any extra pay.
Thanks, Marissa. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edson? Nothing. Nothing from Mr. Edson? Mr. McHugh?
Good evening. Just two quick updates. An email went out to all district employees yesterday regarding Stephen Burchak, Doc Byrd, who was our opening day speaker. He's going to do a district wellness check-in on Friday, June 5th at 9:00 a.m. We put it on My Learning Plan yesterday, and by this morning, we had 55 employees register for that virtual check-in. On another topic, General Dynamics Information Technology, that is the business that's located in the old Ames Plaza off of 9 and 20. I was contacted by Patricia Seraphin, who would like to help support our two Title I schools, Red Mill and Donald P. Sutherland, by organizing a collection of some school supplies. So Mrs. Squatchy and Mr. Albi were kind enough to list some items that they're absolutely certain will be needed to start a new school year, and General Dynamics Information Technology is going to do their best to collect those items. That is important because the COVID-19 pandemic definitely impacted our families, and the structure of our school year is going to change a little bit. So in our primary grades, a lot of times, there was some community sharing. Students were organized at tables, and they shared crayons and other supplies, and most likely, that will not occur at the start of next school year, and students will need their own supplies. So that should allow us to remove some of the things on the general school supply list and ease the burden for some of our families in those two schools.
Thanks, Jim. And I want to thank General Dynamics and the principals Helen and Jack for us helping support that effort as well for our schools. I would encourage anyone who knows, remembers Dr. Byrd, that it's a very humorous fellow and does a great job with wellness and... Mr. Simons, anything?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of concern regarding graduation ceremonies in the public and among superintendents and school boards, really everybody in the educational community. And as a superintendent, I can tell you, I wish I had discretion and authority that I typically have to go forward with a plan at this time that could meet everyone's expectations, but I can't. So I just want to advise everybody about what the process is at this point. So I just want to advise everybody about what the process is at this point. At the community forum, we talked about the options that were available and under consideration, including an actual physical ceremony of students on the turf field at Columbia High School, which I have every confidence will be done well and be done safely and be done appropriately to honor and respect the students and their families for graduation and completing their K-12 experience. That particular program is not within the current CDC and state directives. They have 10 or fewer people in a gathering. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, we have seen some loosening of the guidance from the governor's office as it relates to memorial ceremony, Memorial Day ceremonies being able to be permitted, religious observance being able to be permitted. And today, we learned that the state of New Jersey is going to permit graduation ceremonies in July, later than typical. So I don't have all the information. I know at this time to be able to say we can go forward with that plan, but we rolled that plan out to the community as Plan A. Plan B was to have an event to celebrate graduation at the Malta Drive-In. And we're up against a deadline to book that drive-in and make sure that we could honor that reservation because there's other districts in line on a waiting list. So we sent a survey out to the parents of our seniors last week, and we got a very good response to the survey. And we asked them initially, what was your preference, Plan A, Plan B, or both? And the idea of both was presented in order to make sure that while we waited for further guidance and direction from the state, if it is going to come, or the county, that we wouldn't lose the opportunity to do the, do the drive-in event. And then we could always schedule the graduation, an actual physical graduation diploma ceremony after that. Based on where we're at right now, we are going to go forward with a drive-in event, and we're going to reserve decisions regarding an actual graduation ceremony until we see what happens over the next couple of weeks. We've had many discussions among the superintendents in the Questar BOCSs, with our county executive, in our county department of health. We probably had four, we had one today. And we're in a position where the county doesn't feel it has the authority to approve or disapprove of our graduation plans. They feel that school districts can be trusted to execute those plans safely. However, there is also an indication that in some communities, these plans have been directed to be shut down by the governor. And therefore, I don't want to take a chance that we go forward with a plan, disappoint students and families, and potentially embarrass the community until we know exactly whether or not we have that discretion. So it doesn't hurt to have a nice event at the drive-in to celebrate our families and our seniors and wait and see what might happen. Another process that we have set up through Craig Hansen at BOCSs, we provided some information regarding what districts were planning. Many districts are planning multiple options. Craig Hansen, we created a format for submitting those plans to Craig, and Craig will be facilitating the review of those plans with the county department of health. But they're not going to say, go ahead and do it. They're just going to give us feedback on the plan. So we're working as best we can. My preference, again, hasn't changed. I would like to be able to have an actual ceremony, recognize the kids. The other thing we asked on the survey is, in the event that we postponed the date for graduation later into mid-July, would you be available? And we do have some students and families that would not be available. Majority of those individuals, it's a small group, but it's an important group. It's graduates who may be going into the military and are required to report. In the event that we have to postpone our full graduation, there always is the possibility the state may do something similar to New Jersey and permit ceremonies later on in the summer. If we do have to do that, we will have a separate ceremony for those kids who can't make it, or a separate event for those kids who can't make it because they have obligations. And that's the best we can do at this point.
You're talking the drive-in plus ceremony here?
Yes.
Any questions for Jeff?
Possibly later on.
Regarding graduation, board members? No questions? And I just want to, again, we're trying to be sensitive to the needs of the community, the seniors, the parents. You know, I know it's a frustrating thing to not know what's happening. And having the multiple options at least gives us an opportunity to react. I think we'll proceed as best we can, given the circumstances. We've said this before. We recognize the frustration. We also want to keep our kids and families safe and have an opportunity, though, to celebrate this year, this very unusual year. So we'll continue to reach out, keep you informed of what's happening, and move forward from there.
The concern is that nobody knows who has the authority to do this. Doesn't have the capacity for the number of graduates that we have. It doesn't have. We have to, have to do every other space in the drive-ins. We have 305 graduates. Malta has more space than we have. But it won't accommodate all of our seniors. That's my understanding, Mike. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. We are going to Malta because it has 400 spots, which will allow us to park, and then 400 spots of social distancing. April Park High School also is going to, I think they're going to the Jericho Drive-In. They're too big for the Hollywood Drive-In's also.
Thank you, Mike. It is about a 35-minute drive, I think. We wanted to get our, we needed to get, we needed to act fast to get our reservation, you know, before we lost that. It'd be quite a caravan if we have 300-plus cars headed to the drive-ins.
Mike, have you confirmed that? June 16th date?
Yes, we're all set. Larry will be excited to know. The purchase order will be coming up tomorrow to his office.
Okay, all right. And Mike and I and Mark Adam are having another meeting tomorrow to put out another communication to the families.
Thanks, Mr. Simons. Moving from discussion items, Peter, can you put the, at least the title and the sign for me? We have the approval of draft minutes for May 20th. Mr. Mann, you were not present at that meeting, so any questions, provisions to the minutes? Board members, anything? I'll need a motion to approve the minutes from someone in the audience, board member? I can't see anyone, so I have to shout it out.
I make a motion.
I need a second?
I second it.
Is that Michelle?
Yes.
All those in favor? Mark abstaining, so we got everybody. Thank you. Next, go into regular business. Approval programs for residents show with disabilities. I need a motion to approve that. Just unmute and shout it out.
I make a motion, Mike.
Joanne Taylor, second?
Second.
Karen?
Karen, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approved. Moving to reports and presentations of the superintendent. Okay. Tabled motions, I have none at this time. Old business, board members, any old business to come before? Then we're moving to the consent agenda. We have items A through L. Any questions or comments on those items?
Mike, this is Joanne. I just need to pull item G, the extended season, for a separate vote, please.
Item G, separate vote?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve by consent, items A through L, except for item G for a separate vote. So again, that's item A through L without G. Need a motion to approve that. Mark, second?
I'll second it.
John, Donald, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstaining? Now, item G, I need a motion to approve item G, extended season, appendix C. Need a motion for that? Mark, second? I need a name. Is that Deanna?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Deanna. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Aye.
Joanne Taylor abstaining? Approved. New business? Any new business, board members, that need to discuss? Hearing none. We'll move to public forum number two. Mr. Simons, any comments? Public forum number two. Did I miss something? Is there a re-log in there? We'll move to, we'll come back to the board forum on Mr. For, I mean, public forum when Mr. Simons logs on. Board members, any, any comments at this time?
Mike, I just have a brief comment, if you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I just wanted to thank the administration and you specifically. Through this difficult time, transparency in a time where information is ever-changing and flowing is what builds confidence in what we're doing. So I really appreciate your efforts, Jeff and Mike, to keep this in the forefront of what we're doing and moving the district forward in these uncharted waters. So thank you, and I just want to acknowledge the hard work that both of you are doing and your team, Jeff, as well.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Comments? We checked the email and there was no public comments. All right, so I'll close the public and board forums. Just one last chance, anybody, board members? Now, we will have need for an executive session, as we have done in the past. Mr. Goodwin will do a separate email to the board members to log into the executive session. At this point, I need a motion to move into executive session. Mr. Mann, second?
Second, Michelle.
Second, Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So everyone, have a great night. We don't expect to have any business after the executive session, and the purpose will be for fun and history and personal. Very good. So thanks, everybody. Have a great night. Appreciate your attendance tonight.